And ask Ms. McCarthy-Bate to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, somewhere out there, there's Wendy's pet roaming around, and we may have to wait till we track it down or recapture it, so we'll come back to that at the appropriate time. Skipping that, next up are resignations, and this is for information only, from the historic District Commission. Margaret Browning Cufferman has an alternate resigned. Resignation date was 9/23, and that was for her to accept a position as a full member.
Somebody went to retrieve her.
Ah. Next item up on the agenda, First Selectman reappointments, and this is for information only, to the Cable Advisory Council. Howard Jacobson, 666 Sturgis Highway, for a term of 7/13 to 7/15. Pamela C. Jones, 240 Sunny Ridge Avenue, for a term of 7/13 to 7/15. Donald F. Leslie, 160 Hunter Road, for a term of 7/13 to 7/15. And Jerry Spino, from 23 Plum Street, for a term of 7/13 to 7/15. All right, we're back.
Oh, good.
All right. Returning to the earlier item on the agenda, Wendy's pets, presented by former Selectman, Sherry Stenick. Sherry, the floor is yours.
Okay. This is Tinker, and he is one of many animals that the pound right now. Animal control?
How old is he, Bill?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks, it's a he. And you can pick him up at 211 Monroe Highway, along with miniature Pincher, another small dog that just was brought in.
Yep.
Mixed dog, mixed breed. They're loaded, so please stop by and get your favorite pet. Thanks.
That is just in time for the holidays, for anybody thinking ahead.
Yeah, he's really cute, and he wants to stay attached to you because he doesn't allergic.
Sherry, thank you. All right, moving on. First Selectman appointment, for information only, is also to the Employees Retirement Board, and this does require RTM approval. Sanford Herman, Democrat, 465 Fulling Mill Lane, for a term of 11/12 to 11/17, and this is to replace Gene Sturgis, whose term had previously expired. Next up, item seven, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Advisory Committee, and the item before us is to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Advisory Committee to extend their appointments by three months to April 1st, 2014. Do I have a move to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is anyone here from the Bike and Pedestrian Plan Committee who'd like to speak? Ms. Israel, would you just come up and tell us what your committee has in mind here?
Yes, hello, this is Israel, 679 Royal Road.
Hi.
Hello. The committee has, before the TPZ Commission, regulations that we've come up with, and also the master plan itself, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And I guess the agenda for TPZ has been very packed, and they haven't been able to hear us, so for this reason, we were asking for three extra months, so that we could get these measures passed through the Commission.
Just for clarity, it's due to expire 12/31 right now?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just a comment more than question. I actually, just prior to the meeting, had the opportunity to speak with Jim Went in our Planning Department. He and I had a brief conversation about both the process and timing on the regulation piece, as well as the Plan of Conservation and Development, which will, from a logistics standpoint, be kind of two separate actions and steps. His sense is that due to the fact that there's an election in November, and there will be new members on that body, and timing-wise, that those regulations would not likely be on the agenda until after an election, and that it may not be possible to take up the fuller conversation about the Plan, the Master Plan, or the Plan of Conservation and Development, until possibly even after March. So, there may be some wisdom in extending this even past the proposed date of April 1st. I say that in that I wouldn't expect that the committee would continue to meet on a regular basis, simply because the bulk of the work and conversation is done. If what we expected was for them to kind of see through the adoption of this, then, you know, it remains a possibility for them if we expand the charge. Certainly, there's nothing, if we don't, and we let the term expire and the committee expire, it doesn't stop them as individuals from coming forward and advocating, or being a part of the conversation. But given that we've taken it this far, it might make sense to allow that option by extending it until June.
Okay.
Just quickly, thank you for being here. Your committee has done a lot of great work, and you have a lot of work to still do and approvals to get, so thank you for all of that, and I'm happy to support extending the committee's time until as necessary for you to finish your work, so whether that's three months, or six months, or something else, you know, thank you for continuing to serve, and we look forward to working with you, so.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion before us to amend this to a later date?
So I would move that we amend it to read by six months to June 30th, 2014.
Was that to just strike the words, by three months, and put it, just leave to June 30th, 2014?
Sure, we can do that. That sounds great.
I'll second that. And just a quick follow-up, is that beyond the scope of what you folks have discussed? I don't want to force more time and term on you if that's not necessary, or if that's beyond the ability of any of your members to meet.
That's a good question. I understand everyone was willing to meet until March. I'm sure most would be willing to meet until June, if necessary, to finish the work.
Sandy, the chair of the committee, on that?
Andy's here.
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
Yes, if you could, if you'd come up and just introduce yourself, and that way we can ask the question.
Yeah, so Andrew Grisaffa, the Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Advisory Committee. Hi, Kevin, how you doing?
Mr. Kylie, would you like to rephrase that question?
The question was, the item before us is three months, and we just discussed making sure you had plenty of time, pushing it to six months, which sounds great, and thank you again for all your efforts to date and going forward. By pushing it six months, does that interfere with anybody's schedules or abilities to continue serving, or is it just up to six months and you would be okay with it?
To be perfectly frank, there may be the necessity to appoint new board members, committee members, if it does go the full six months.
Could be.
It could be that point. We do have a few members that have, because of outside constraints, that have requested that be able to pull back on meeting. Granted, we, now at this point, we don't, we're sort of meeting on a monthly basis, just as an advisory, sort of as a quasi-committee right now, and just sort of keeping tabs on things, so the time commitment isn't significant.
Right.
But we, there may come, if it goes until May, June, and it goes possibly even further than that, there may be the necessity to appoint replacement members to the committee.
So just as a follow-up, would you prefer us leave it at three, or would you, are you okay with moving it to six, or do you have another suggestion in mind?
Well, I missed the statement by, and I apologize for being five, I was late, so I apologize. I wasn't sure if you had conversations with the Department of Planning or Public Works.
Yes. So I said, just right before you arrived, I did speak with Jim Went, who essentially said that the regulation piece, it would be likely that that would be, not be on the agenda until post-election, so December or January, and that that was a likely timeframe, though certainly he couldn't definitively promise that. His remarks regarding the broader Plan of Conservation and Development amendments were that it was highly unlikely that that would happen prior to the end of March, and that it would be perhaps more, well, it would be more likely that it would happen by the end of June. I just, if I may kind of follow up and piggyback on what Andy has said about this, and I have been at the table with this amazing group, and I would like to say thank you too. I want to thank Selectman Kylie for saying that, because they have been a tremendous group, who has done a lot of work. Part of, there are kind of two pieces to the conversation. One is this charge really asked them to move something forward through the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is the document that it makes sense to have things worked into. Obviously, the regulations are another piece of that. The other part of the conversation is, this group has, as it has evolved, been a natural place for conversation among various departments, whether it's engineering, or health, or the Board of Education. We've had many folks around the table talking about various aspects of how these pieces work together. And the group, one of the suggestions as part of this document is to create, in town, some kind of standing committee that would be able to address this issue. There are some logistical questions that I think we talked about having more discussion. Certainly, the members could expand on that, but I simply propose the amendment because of Jim Went's comments, but do suggest that if the committee gets to a point where it seems to make sense that it disbands, and the process moves in a different direction, then that could be further conversation here at this table, or with the First Selectman's office, or the Planning Department. But in terms of being able to meet the specific charge, that was where my amendment comes from.
If I might, just to address Kristen's question, is the committee going to make some recommendations as you near the end of your tenure about what should happen moving forward, whether it's a standing committee or some, any implementation support beyond our normal process and normal town bodies? To some degree, one could argue, once we get regulation changes into the Master Plan and the current bodies are set up to kind of follow those, that perhaps there isn't anything else necessary. Based on what you've seen, and looking forward to the implementation, and some possible changes down the road, or things you see coming, perhaps some advice can come back from your committee to this board, suggesting what you'd like to see going forward, so we have that for consideration at some point.
Yeah. What I would propose, and to you, and to also to, you know, the committee, and I think they would feel comfortable with it, is that if we do go forward with a six-month extension, which in general, I'm fine with, that in March, that we actually have another touch base with DPW, and with the Planning Department, to actually see, you know, back in November or October, you gave us this estimation that, you know, May-June time, come February-March time, is that still a likelihood? You know, what is our timeframe for doing that? So that would be one piece. If you wanted to have any sort of additional language to the piece that you're voting on today, to actually have a report or a statement come March, to say that the committee will report back to the Board of Selectmen, you know, in March, about the status of the integration. We would be more than happy to provide a recommendation. It doesn't exactly, you know, in sort of the narrowness of our charge, it doesn't exactly allow us to, if you will, in my interpretation of it, to actually have a formal recommendation about what the committee. Our recommendation would be what is in our plan right now, but we would be more than happy to reiterate that to the Board of Selectmen, as far as this is how we see this being implemented, and how we would recommend moving forward.
Okay. I mean, that's, I don't think we need to necessarily change the wording here, if you just, as part of your committee's winding down.
Yeah, we would, you know, even if it's not included in there, we would, I would recommend to the committee that in March, or February-March timeframe, however it works out, that we report back to the Board of Selectmen, as far as this is where we stand now.
Yep.
And this is, you know, a year out, or six months out from now, or a year out from now, this is what we like to see happen going forward.
Kevin, does that sound reasonable to you?
It does.
All right. Any other questions on the, I guess, the amendment? Any amendment only? Any comments from the public on the amendment? Any amendment only? Okay, back to this board. Anything else on the amendment? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, which would extend their appointments to June 30th, 2014? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the item before us, as amended.
Thank you.
Not done yet. Any further comments on the item before us as amended?
No.
Good. All right. Any comments from the public on the amended item that is before this board? All right, again, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you've got overtime.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this.
No double time pay, though.
Thank you again for all you're doing.
You bet.
Yes, thank you.
And for adding the term "share-offs" to our lexicon.
Yes.
All right. Next up, the Osborne Hill Building Committee, and to hear an update from the Osborne Hill Building Committee. Rick, if you will please come to the mic and introduce yourselves to the audience.
I'm Kim Marshall. I'm the Chair of the Building Committee for Osborne Hill, the Window Replacement and PCB Remediation. Our committee formed in the spring, and we were...
I want to speak up a little bit, because you're even hard to hear from here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've heard that before. Is this the mic?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
It's just a recording. Yeah, it's not, there's not a speaker system. What it does is that record you for Fair TV audience at home.
Okay. All right. Thank you. In the spring, when our committee formed, we already had the benefit of a conceptual study having already been done as the result of PCBs being discovered in the school back, basically, a year earlier. So we had a conceptual study that we could work with. We knew the committee charge, and our next step was to hire an architect. We hired Silver Petraselli, who had done the conceptual study. They had a very competitive price, but they really knew the project well, so that is why we chose to go with them. They have presented various construction budgets. They've presented renderings and schematics, and over several meetings, we've made decisions as to what direction we're going to go in. The construction documents are well underway. Sal Morbeto from the town is putting the, or handling the approval process with the state and the EPA. We anticipate putting the project out for bid early January, being able to start the gymnasium portion of the work in the spring, and doing the window replacement in the summer. And basically, what we've found, we have to do besides the window replacements, is in order to address the gymnasium PCB situation, we have to remove the flooring, we have to encapsulate the walls, and we actually have to remove the roof structure, because it's the only cost-effective way of handling the PCB remediation. I've sent to you some architectural renderings of what the architect proposes to date, and also some building elevation showing around the entire building, so you know the locations of where the work is. I do have some paper copies, if you'd like them.
Would you like to see those?
Sure.
Yes, especially if they're colored.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
While we could address the committee charge in a variety of different architectural ways, we did stay with the most cost-effective way we could accomplish things.
Thank you for that.
It was made very easy by the information we had from the architect, and the architect did a great job. So, right now, everything is on schedule. Everything is on budget. We did have some remediation expenses, or some additional testing expenses that we incurred recently, but they fall within a part of our overall budget that is, that would be part of. So, we still have money left in reserve for work that would be pre-construction. And I've got lots of facts and figures, if you want to know that kind of information.
All right, stop. Any questions from the board to take Kim up on our offer?
Sure, have a couple. All right. Thank you, and thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. If I go back to the memo from September 12th, and thank you for putting that memo out, that gave us a good lead into this meeting, and some good information.
You're welcome.
The first paragraph talked about the connector corridor between the main building and the annex building, if it was possible to fit it into budget. So, is there an update on, are you planning to do that piece?
Yes.
And is it affordable, and at what cost?
Yes. It is in, it's actually shown on the renderings.
Okay. My little black and white photocopies didn't do it justice over here. So the corridor is in, so that's a good thing, and it's fit.
The corridor is in, it'll be fully heated and air-conditioned. It's not permanent windows.
And that's this piece right here?
Yes.
That's this piece?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's wide enough for the downstream circulation.
It accommodates all the traffic that has to go through there, and all those other engineering type?
Yes, if you could answer that, kind of back at the podium, so we can hear you.
Sorry. It's, what you have there now is just really an exterior canopy, and poles that, you know, don't, I mean, that's really all it is, poles and a canopy. But this will be, this will provide a safe enclosed space going between the annex building and the school itself.
All right, and if I might ask a follow-up?
Sure.
One of the rationales, when the canopy was put in, was that by not putting in a full enclosed wing, was that you didn't have to bring the rest of the building up to code? And how has that been addressed in this, or have the rules changed?
Are you talking about fire ratings, or?
Maybe, Mr. Morbeto, does that question make more sense?
Yes.
Because I think we talked about that fairly extensively back in the day.
Yeah, back in the day. The Silver Petraselli is working with the code issues. There still are code issues when you're doing this connection. One of them is seismic separation of the structures. There's some fire code issues that have to be addressed, but there are avenues within the code that allow, to minimize the code impacts that we've previously talked about, about burning the main building up to code because of this enclosed connector. He's worked hard on that, so they have a good handle on that. There's not a lot of stuff coming back into the building, so that's not an expense that we're dealing with.
So all those have been identified, and those are, can be managed within the budget?
He's working with that, within the alternate for the connector.
Okay.
And that is, just as a clarification, it's in the project budget as a, it's intended to be done, but it's as an alternate in case bids don't come in properly. That would be the first avenue to work with, to lower the cost to stay within the bond.
Got it.
So, just to be clear, the corridor is in, it's in the plan, and the fact that the corridor is fully and firmly connecting the two parts of the building that once were not connected in such a way, any and all code issues in either side are being addressed and funded within this plan and budget?
Correct.
Assuming the bids come back.
Right. Yeah, right. They... That's the plan, anyway.
That's the plan, and just in case there's a relief valve, in case something goes wrong with bids, you don't get efficient bids, because it's PCB remediation, it's not somebody going, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I want to go and get that." So you might not get as good a bid as you would hope for.
Kristen, would you have some follow-up?
Just to clarify, what, if the bids don't come in as we hope, what is the alternative, specifically, to this enclosed setup?
The, okay, the enclosure was always an add-on to the project. The main focus of the project was the windows that we originally did, and the remediation that is needed, that we uncovered.
Right.
The connecting corridor, and I believe Dr. Title even said, if that's what breaks the camel's back, if that's the thing that costs too much, we would have to lose it, to make sure that the remediation and the windows take place.
Right.
So, it would be either scale back the connector, or eliminate it completely, to make sure that we're staying within the funding.
Right. Which we all, we do appreciate, I'll, I actually, yes, see, Kevin, Selectman Kylie's nodding too, I think now we've all three said that. But the, I think the other question that Mr. Tetra had was, had the rules changed? And that, when we first talked about this, here at this table, going forward with this project, that was, we had questions and conversation about it then, and you just mentioned that there are pieces of the code that allow for you to address some pieces, but maybe not to do the wholesale kind of work that, at one point in time, it was understood we would have to do. Did the regulations change, or were we just able, through working with the architect, to understand a way to do it more efficiently, that that would work?
Building code regulations do change continuously. One might be the fire code that's predating something being done, or one might be the building code, or some other code that's making something happen. Since we originally envisioned, we had that discussion, I think it was like five years ago, about reaching costs, the code would probably change at least two or three times between just those two codes, the fire code and the building code. The architect did mention that there was a newer provision that he was using. I didn't get into the details about that, but they're very confident that they're fulfilling all the code requirements, if that connector's built, if and when that connector's built.
If I might follow-up, he's very confident, has this been run by the state to make sure that it doesn't impact our reimbursements as we go through this?
The, our PCT meeting for this project is November 5th. We've been up to the state for a prep meeting. We did talk about the components of the project, and we, they didn't foresee any problems with the elements of the project that we have, or our reimbursement.
Okay. Concern is that, especially with respect to code issues, that we wouldn't want to get caught by the state, you know, two years now, saying, "We're not going to allow these costs or this reimbursement, because you didn't follow our prescribed guidelines in terms of codes." And I know they can be out of date, too. I don't mean to question the architect on this, but I want to make sure that they're both on the same page, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
Right. We go up, November 5th, what it's called is a PCT meeting, which is a plan completion test. They'll take the documents, review them, to see that they're complete enough for them to accept for review. At that point, if they accept it at that day, or maybe a day or two later, there might be one element or a piece of paper that's missing. They accept it, they review it, four code elements, all different laws, handicap, fire code, building code. They probably have another half a dozen different regulations that they review it for, and then they approve those plans, and give us approval to bid. So that's where they're saying those plans are correct. So that'll happen in the month of November, leading into December.
Okay.
We're allowing, in the timeline, November 5th, we're actually allowing, I believe, up to two months for that to occur, because concurrent with that, the remediation plan... up to two months for that to occur, because concurrent with that, the remediation plan that's filed with the EPA by the hygienist for the project, has been filed. They can take longer, so they're already in their approval process, they can take one, two, three months. So, the state might just be waiting for that approval letter from EPA before they give us their letter to allow us to approve, to go to bid. So, we're waiting for all that, we're anticipating that we would have that letter, so we're bidding in January, which would be the most effective time to get the best prices.
Okay, thank you. My caution is just, we've had a lot of planning and cooperation among both the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, RTM, and Board of Ed, to kind of make sure that we process this project and the approval, so that we would get a full shot at reimbursement. So, I just thank you for being conscious of that.
Yeah, and we actually have the, we had the same prep meeting for the special legislation portion of that, which was the emergency last summer. So, all that will also occur, and we'll be able to get reimbursement on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on the board?
Yes, please. Ms. Marshall, I was trying to catch up on my notes, when you were mentioning, you were talking about the things you've run into with the gym, the gym flooring now needs to be, is it removed, or removed, cleaned and put back down, or removed and replaced?
Yeah, I believe it has to be replaced.
And then you said something about the roof, and there was a third component, you mentioned there, that seemed like they were kind of new bits of information for the gym area. Can you just walk through that again, please?
Yeah. There are, the fireproofing is contaminated, and that is on the bar joists on the underside of the roof deck. And we could spend a lot of money removing that in a very, very, you know, slow process. Or we could do it according to what the architect's budgets are. We could remove all of that in its entirety, and then put new roof deck, new supports and new roof deck in.
Does it mean a new roof on the outside, or just?
It does, yeah.
So, a completely new roof?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Including supports on the inside and the exterior roof itself?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's kind of new. And the floor, and was there, was there three things, or just those two things?
Well, the walls, and the walls have to be encapsulated, and I believe it's the foam padding is, has to be completely removed.
The gym is a wonderful thing. It's, I think every surface has something that has PCBs that need to be remediated. The walls, there's bumper pads that just have to be tossed because they soaked up. The floor that you were asking about, not only there's the floor that has contamination in the finish, but also underneath the floor is a pad. That, that got it.
That has to work out.
Underneath that floor was an old sports floor, a rubber floor. That has to be remediated, it actually has mercury in it. So, that's another remediation process that's accounted for in the budget.
Would that be a removal?
That's a removal, it would be taken off, the concrete stays.
Okay. So, as we expected, you got in there and you found some things that are very important, very dangerous, that need to be either remediated, removed, and it sounds like they're both pretty big-ticket items. So, my follow-up is, with these new things in here, or things that maybe we didn't exactly know about at one point in time, are we still okay getting all of these things done and staying in the budget? Or have you had to move a few things around to make that work?
Well, one of the options we looked at really on was to go the route that we're going, or to basically completely replace the gymnasium.
Okay.
And that was millions of dollars more. So, we're going with encapsulation or replacement of different parts that makes sense, that follow all the requirements.
Right. So, we haven't crossed the point where all of these changes in remediation expenses exceed the cost of putting a new gym in?
No.
No.
What is that gap at this point?
I ran the scenario, but I forgot.
I've actually got the information, but it was in the low, I think it was in the low, the budget was the low threes versus the middle six million dollar range. It was that kind of spread.
Is that, is that where the spread is today with these new items, or is the spread closer?
We're not going with the full replacement of the gym.
No, that I understand. I'm just trying to see if the gap is close to a point where it makes more sense to look at it, or not.
Since, since the time of the conceptual budget, the amount that was included in that conceptual budget for the remediation.
The gym work.
Remediation, well, there's other remediation.
Right.
Remediation portion of the project, actually, is actually smaller, they've actually had better, brought in some contractors to get better numbers on it, as now that we know how it's actually going to be attacked, where the roof was a surprise that it does have to go. It actually turned out that it's not necessarily a premium, that much of a premium as first thought, because you're allowed to dispose of the material as a bulk product, there's different categories. So, you can get it into the cheaper category, because there's so much of it. So, that brought down the cost. So, it played off on itself, and they're safe with the remediation budget. Nothing's in danger there.
So, short strokes, big picture, even with these surprises, and even with the roof, the sum of all of these things that need to be done still makes sense versus removing the gym, and still stay within the overall scope of the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Could always spend more money.
Well, no.
That's not our goal.
We just want to do it right.
It'll be a nice improvement.
Beautiful. Thanks.
And to follow up, I had some of the same questions Selectmen Kylie did, in terms of those additional testing pieces and the other things you found. Were there other areas outside of the gym where you found some unexpected surprises? Because, you know, the windows, the doors, we already know, everything else is already known, but were there any other changes from the last time you talked to us here?
Well, we have quarterly testing done, but it was the, I believe, the August report that had some concerns in several areas, and that was retested, and it came up okay. So, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
No, I'm good. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Would you like to take these, the names we've used?
Are these for us to keep? These are?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next up is Ida Nye, to hear a report on improvement plans for Sullivan Independence Hall from Roy Urban. Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Are you okay speaking from the podium?
I think so. Although I got to, I'll have to spread this out.
Do you want to maybe sit here, so I can speak?
Oh, no.
Can I spread out?
I want to stand here and point out what we plan to do.
Okay.
First of all, I'm Roy Urban, chairman of the Sullivan Independence Hall Committee, which was formed back, believe it or not, in 1998, at which time the committee re-angled this building, this Honorable John J. Sullivan. We added three flagpoles outside, we put in the plaque on the side of the building, the entryway with John's trail on it. And then a few years back, we added interior-wise, the two murals as you enter each end of the building. We did that. And I might remember that.
Oh, you got?
If you have some weights.
That's why those names tag you there. We know, we know who we are. Most productive they've been. All right.
Again, just so you know, this committee is self-funded, no back-end plan. We paid for the whole thing, and we have adequate funds to pay for these investments. What we're going to do is move the entryway.
Roy, if I?
Before we move into the drawings, I just wanted to ask a little bit, first of all, thank you for being here also. I wanted to just ask a little bit about that committee. I actually didn't live in town at the, at the time that the committee was formed. Who formed the committee, and how did that come about? And if you could help me understand a little bit more about the background?
Yes.
Because it's not, I'm not, I'm not clear.
I understand. It was, it was appointed and formed by then-selectman Ken Fladel. And on the committee was myself, Jackie Durrell, Eunice Postel, Michael Daley, Bill Fitzpatrick Senior, John Rabel, and Mary Sullivan Daughy, John's daughter, who now I talked to the other day, she lives in Florida, basically. But that was the beginning of that committee. And unfortunately, out of those eight or nine people, there's only two of us left, myself and Mary. And I essentially run the committee, I'm the only one up here. And I've been doing all the work, frankly, for the improvements. And Mary goes along 100% with them.
And part of why I ask is because as this body, we often have, even today, we have a bunch of different terms and appointments. It was a new group I wasn't aware of, and so I was just wondering how it got formed and how it works on an ongoing basis. So, it sounds like it was a set group of people, a lot of amazing people, actually, even though I didn't know a lot of those people I know of them.
Wonderful people.
And who have done so much for the town. And now, we have charges and terms and all that. So, when, when the group was formed, the intent was to literally oversee this building itself.
It was to honor John Sullivan, in what way we could formulate a plan. And our initial reaction was, this building, John had, he was the one who conceived this building, that we should concentrate on this building, and name it after him, because it was his building, and we should remember him in that context.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up question? And by the way, thank you, I often stop to look at the plaque on the side of the building. It's, he leaves an amazing legacy for all of us here. I, you said that there are no taxpayer funds, that it's not funded by taxpayer dollars. So, if you could explain that part of it as well, I would.
Gifts, anonymous gifts.
Okay. So, just over time, there?
Over time, and it continues.
Okay. Well, I'm, it's great to have you here. Great to learn more.
No problem.
All right. Roy, thank you. If you want to step us through the rest of what you're proposing.
We all agree that the north entrance of the building really is seldom used. It's the south entrance with the big parking lot, which is the dominating entryway for people coming to do business in Town Hall. So, we felt we should change the entryway from the north to the south entryway, and that we have done. In so doing, we're going to remove the plaque from the north and put it out aside of the south entryway, similar to the way it is here.
Okay.
We are going to also make a more formal entry on the south entry. Right now, it's just a plain, flat entryway. We're going to build a portico outward of a Georgian design, which is historic designs in this area, there's multiple designs, but this is a historic design, and with columns, and we're going to enlarge it slightly to keep it in proportion to what it should be, with a slight motif over it, because we're going to pick up eventually, as part of the plan, hopefully, a picket fence. But midway in the building, we're going to bring out the flat center section about a foot, and build a peak over it to match the peak at the south and north entryway. We're also going to add to the shingles, holdbacks, to give it a more historic colonial Federalist And then we come to what I consider the real charm and attractiveness to do this, bringing in Fairfield in this historic district. You may not realize that there are seven, about 70 homes, 35 of them, and extends from Tierney's Creek at the edge of Opost Road, as it goes around Opost Road to almost the library, there's about 70 homes. And it goes up Fairfield Beach Road to basically Sunny Home. Of those 70 homes, about 35 of them have picket fences, white picket fences, which is remarkable. And I think, I find them most attractive, I really do. Some people don't particularly like picket fences, I like them. And I think with the history of our area being dominated with picket fences, that I would like to have a picket fence go around the building. Now, you have the pictures there that I have given to you beforehand, you can see the picket fences going around the building. One correction I have, in an application, I had that we were going to add about 600 feet of picket fences. I've reduced that now to about 320. I've done away with it coming around both sides of the entryway, and this triangular piece down there, I've now taken that away, because people thought it was maybe a little too much. Lastly, at the triangular piece, as you come in the south entryway of the building, remember there's a tree there that they cut down, I think, two or three months ago? There, I want to put in a flagpole, a higher flagpole than we have out on the side of the building, to designate, this is the entryway. But to do it the way I'd like to do it, the flagpole, because of our historic history, Connecticut was one of the 13 colonies, I would like to put a Betsy Ross flag on it, and also a yardarm. Now, some people say, "But that's for yacht clubs." Well, it's not necessarily for yacht clubs, but Fairfield has kind of a history with our beachfronts and the British coming by water. The main thing being, back in 1779, when they landed at McKenzie Point in Southport, marched along the beach, all the way along Fairfield Beach Road area, all the way down the beach road, and came in, and then proceeded to burn the town of Fairfield, which is tremendous historic insight of what the British did to us. And at that time, Black Rock was part of Fairfield, and they had a fort there, fighting off British ships, so that we had a real naval, a naval entanglement. And to me, I think a lot of people don't realize that, and I feel this would be something very unique, to have not only a flagpole with the Betsy Ross flag, but also to have a yardarm, where it shows the naval history of the town. And, you know, normally on yardarms, you would put burgies or something on each yardarm, and we can use that to have events, different kind of events, Red Cross Month, I mean, whatever you want. So, it would be something else that would be, I think, most attractive. Now, the fence. Let me, Michael, if I can just take this. I don't know if you've ever seen this before, but this is a historic plan for the whole area that was done many years ago, back, what is it, the 19?
1998.
1998. This is Beach Road. This shows you, these are picket fences, coming all the way down on the north side. On the south side, this is picket fence, it goes behind Town It goes behind Town Hall. A lot of people don't realize it's there, by Sun Tavern, and then cuts up this way. On the Old Post Road itself, by St. Paul's, there's a picket fence coming behind Old Academy to that point. This is Burr Mansion, believe it or not, Burr Mansion, which now has a brick wall. This used to be a picket fence. So that shows you the predominance of picket fences in the area. This is Sullivan Independence Hall. And where, we would put the fence, it would be by the north entryway, and just coming up, it would indent here by the flagpoles. And that would be only about 320 feet. I think in color, this is 340? Yeah, all the way around. It would be, in color, I think it shows out even more. And here's the portico, the rendition of it. Here. Originally, I was, I was thinking of having two fences by the south entryway, the one you see there, and then this one encompassing the triangular piece. But I'm not going to, we won't do that now. But what I would like, for Selecton to do, I have to go in front of the Historic District Commission, would be to approve the plan, as I've described it, so that at least they know you're supporting it all the way. And as I said, this is at no cost to any taxpayer in town Fairfield.
Roy, could you step, if this was approved, what are the dates that, when would you plan on doing this, when it would be, when it would be done?
Oh, we'd start, start getting bids in for the work, and a couple of months from now. But I would like to have it done before our 375th anniversary, and have that maybe as some part of it, a dedication to the improvements at that time.
And just a couple of things that you were good enough to step me through some of this. The building, the improvements to the building are basically superficial, on the outside. So we won't be impacting the interior space, so it won't impact the people working here, other than obviously some noise interruptions at time to time. But we won't be knocking down any walls or changing the interior workspace, or anybody who go through this.
Good.
And then, Roy, you mentioned the Historic District Commission has to approve this. Are there any other approvals that are necessary in order to affect these changes?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, the building department, of course, but that's...
That's part of the normal permit process and such. So basically, it's this board and the Historic District Commission that are part of that. Okay.
Great. Question, if I may?
Go ahead.
Could you show me on here where the new flagpole will be?
Right, like right in the middle here, or?
Well, yeah, basically, that's a tree. I think that's what it was cut down.
Right.
But it'd be basically in the middle.
In the middle here, of this little area?
Well...
I don't want to mark up here. Got it. Thank you.
I think that, to use the expression, this drawing was done a few years ago, and it's probably right in terms of some of the details on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to exactly right.
Good stuff. Thank you.
This is actually quite a view of what's taking place here in terms of this one here, the museum, Sun Tavern, Victorian Cottage, and Edgorn, the old academy, and Old Town Hall.
Yeah, this is a great document.
It is. This was presented to me by the engineers department, and that's here.
Any questions or follow-up?
Not right this second. Still thinking.
Is this a document that would get updated as part of this process?
Well, they don't really show the...
Like the new historical...
Well, you could, someone would have to do it, Mr. Kylie. I mean, you know, it showed it over there, but that's now St. Paul's.
This is a whole document. One of the questions would be, does engineering have an updated document?
Yes.
Which might more of the point, and they might...
Yeah, I was just curious, to see what it looked like today versus...
Given we've got the museum in place there, I would fully expect they have a more updated document.
I think though, this is, I only got this about a month ago. I have a feeling this would be the most recent thing they have.
Wow.
Interesting. There's been some big changes back there, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
The rest of it, a lot of this has been the same for the last few hundred years.
There's a lot of history on this piece of paper.
Well, these old historical homes have certainly been. And then this up here, they had a couple of which, they've done a magnificent restoration job.
All right. This is report, Mr. Urban was looking for this board to kind of recommend to the Historic District Commission that they approve this. This is kind of the first time we've seen this. Would you like some time to think on this for a bit? Bring this back next week, or you, would you consider making a decision on it? Are you comfortable in that shorter time period, done it today?
I, I was not prepared to approve. I didn't realize that that was what you were hoping for today. So for me, I would prefer just to think, one of the, just questions-wise, one of the questions I had in terms of the fences is, will there be access points? I assume there will need to be for maintenance and whatnot.
And the fences would also need to be approved by the Historic District Commission, and they... That is a point of consideration for the district.
Right. One of the other questions I had is, in terms of developing this, who were some of the people that you talked with? Were you able to talk with any of the folks on the commission, or anyone from the museum and history center? Or, as you prepared that, I know there has been a lot of work that's been done on the campus, that's been done in different ways. So, again, this committee, it was a new discovery for me to learn about, and I'm just curious about the process.
I spoke to the chairman of the Historic District Commission. I met with her twice. I met with the director of the Museum and History Center, and I explained everything to him, and he thought it was fine. And I talked to department heads in this building, and no one had any problem. They all thought it was a great idea.
Mr. Urban has also been working with architect Beni Klein-Barnhart, who's done a lot of work in town.
He was a member of the Historic District Commission years ago. So I'd love approval today, because I'm going there tomorrow, and at least to have that behind me.
Yeah. I would love to support this, and support this today. I think it's a great plan, and I think you've worked hard and very long on it, and your committee has done a great job over the years. So possibly to answer some of your concerns, if there were any, you know, minor modifications or nits and nats, the Historical Society is going to catch those types of things along the way, on behalf of us. So I, I would be prepared to vote today and vote in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Unless that's pushing the board, and the board doesn't want to do it.
I think, I'll be honest, I'm, this is, there's a lot of new information today, and part of my question really is one about a process. And you're hearing me asking some of those questions, in terms of, for example, our next item is the Penfield Building Committee Charge. And this, so to learn that we had a group that was formed to care for, in part, this building, because certainly Public Works is responsible for taking care of some of the other pieces that go on here. So I think that's part of my question, because when we talk about Penfield, we've had a lot of public conversation, and a lot of different people involved in the conversation. So that's, that's part of my hesitancy about it. It's, it's a new, a new model for me, and a new piece of information. I, I respect very much what you're saying about the picket fences, and I have mixed feelings about the fences, just, I don't, I don't think that we really have people accessing the grounds right by the building in terms of, of using them in any kind of meaningful way. So it's not really that, that kind of a...
Decadent, it's decadent.
Right, right. It's more of a landscaping. So I think that's, that's part of my hesitation, not the, not the plan itself, other than, you know, I have, and that's more an opinion, right? That's just a personal preference or whatnot. I, for me, what I'm hearing from you is that, in terms of talking with those who are involved in Historic District, you've done all that homework, and I'm grateful for that.
I've talked, I've talked to them. I don't say they approved it, because they have to have a committee meeting.
Right, absolutely.
And things like the fence will be components that the Historic District Commission will take a long, hard look at, as well as they will everything else, to make sure that it fits in with the character of the area.
So I, what I would say is, I certainly don't want you to hear my questions as anything, but it's more a process question, and this being a new piece. I am very grateful for the work that's been done, and I feel that this is, that our whole campus with this building, this is a place where the town gathers in many ways, whether it's here as a meeting, or to come and do work, or to learn, all kinds of things happen here. So I think it's important that we continue to maintain this building, and to, you know, have it be in keeping with the other buildings on campus. So I'm grateful for the work that you've done. And I just have those process piece hesitancies, and I hear what you're saying about the Historic District Commission conversation, and I know that that will happen there. And that's really, I don't see that as our role, anyway. That's, that's their job. That's what we're, we've asked them to do.
We did just, in some of our further talking, as we, as we were talking through, we realized that, as much as we were going to add more of a main entrance down at the southern part, we also have the ADA access at the northern doorway. We would, it would be intended to maintain that. Enough, especially we have handbag parking spaces along the street here, so they're close to the north entrance.
Right.
We don't have any real sign that says that. So one of the things that we would, was proposed adding as part of this, is a sign. And again, given the district that we're in, that sign would actually have to get approved by the Historic District Commission to...
Right. Which gives me comfort, because even though it is kind of a, as far as your process question goes, I completely respect that, and I understand that. And I feel, I've felt that way many times over the years about voting on something that maybe I didn't think I knew everything about at that particular moment. But here, in this case, in addition to all the wonderful work that's been done, I know that for Selecton Tetchu has been involved to, to a level where he understands it to a higher degree than I do. And I know that Mr. Urban has worked hard, and I know that the Historical Society, or the Historical Commission, is going to take a very keen look at the entire plan. And so I have a high level of confidence in that ongoing process, enough to, enough to say yes.
Thank you.
I mean, if you look at this, it lays out, it's an interesting mix that we have here. Burr Mansion is maintained by the Fairfield Museum. Burr Garden Advisory Committee that's looking at landscaping in between here.
Mm-hmm.
We have Mr. Urban and his committee, one, that is looking at Sullivan Independence Hall. We have the Fairfield Museum that is looking at this whole place, has updates and improvements underway to Sun Tavern, hopefully bring that back to life. And on the drawing boards at some point, it's looking at the Victorian Cottage and Victorian Barn. But they also have a study underway, they just got a grant to kind of look at the grounds, and we need to take all that into place. And down the road, we have an improvement project for Old Town Hall, to break, bring that, while maintaining its historic character, bringing the inside workspace up to the 21st century. So there are some, some different items in work here. The Daughter of the American Revolution has been working on the Old Academy. They also hope to have some of their improvements done in time for our 375th birthday next year. So there's a lot going on in terms of maintaining our heritage, and making this much more of, almost a tourist, but certainly an educational vehicle, to teach our kids about our town, our heritage, where we come from, and what's taking place here. So I think if, I would like to keep Mr. Urban on track here, in terms of getting this through the commission, if we can get you comfortable that it's, it's...
I think, I agree, it's important to have a vote today, and...
To Mr. Kylie's point, if I had to summarize this, if you look at, we've got some great work going on here in terms of the integrity and character of the site. We've got the Historic District Commission that's going to look at this. But if you look at the project itself, and in simplest terms, it really is just about the superficial look at Sullivan Hall, and giving us something else that fits more in character with the area. The interior workspaces at Sullivan Independence Hall will not be impacted by this, other than some obvious noise at certain points during the improvements. And it doesn't cost any taxpayer dollars to do it. And this was part of a program or approach that was set up 15 or so years ago, to make sure that Sullivan Hall was maintained, it didn't deteriorate going through this. So I think that Mr. Urban's done a lot of work, and brought in a well-known professional architect to help with the design, to make sure it's consistent with the building, the district, and the character, for lack of a better term, of the area. So I think that's been a good approach from that standpoint. So I would, I guess I, did it?
I just, I want to say two things before we have a vote. I, I want to say thank you to you and to the other members of the group over time. As I said before, I do, I do stop and read that plaque. I wasn't just giving lip service to that, and I think it's very fitting that we honor Mr. Sullivan with this. So I'm grateful to all of you for the work. And I do think it's important to have a vote today. I'm just not prepared myself to, I'm ready to be there all the way, but I support the moving forward.
If you're comfortable with that, then probably our next step would be to make a motion to add to the agenda, vote to approve this plan, and to, I guess, give our recommendation to the Historic District Commission to please also consider this for approval.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I didn't know whether you wanted me to second it, or wordsmith it.
Either one.
Second.
Okay. Jen, did you get that down, right? Since, we need a vote to put that on the agenda, so that needs to pass by a two-thirds vote. Any further discussion on adding that to the agenda? Any discussion for the public, going to are adding that to the agenda? All right, back to the board. We're ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that item is now before us. Any further discussion on that item?
No, just, thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Okay. Any comments from the public on that item? Ms. Ewing?
Judy, the mics are over here.
We have movable mics at this meeting, unless you just want to stand there and speak, Judy.
Judy Ewing, Saskatoon Hill Terrace. First of all, thank you very much, Roy, for keeping this tradition alive, and being the one that's the spokesman for this. I haven't had a chance to study that, but I am a North-ender. I use the north end building of the building, and I would like, a plaque to remain there with John Sullivan's picture on it. If you want to replicate it for the other end, fine with me, but I think it belongs there. A lot of people walk over from Town Hall, because they get in the wrong place. They walk over from Town Hall and come in that end, and they think that's the front of the building. So that would be one of my suggestions. And the other is, that a few years ago, they changed the back of stairway, step off into the, onto the ramp there. I think the back and the front have to be handicap accessible, because people can park along the side, and they could go in either direction into the building. And I think that that's very important, when you're upgrading to make something handicap accessible. And the other thing would be that, I've noticed that we have like an information area here, but not at... but not at what would be the main building, if we, if we changed the door down to the south end, there would be no information area there. So that is just a few of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Any other comments from the public?
How high is this picket fence on, on the drawings that I got, it looks like it's about two, three, about that high?
It's about three feet.
It's how high?
It's got to be three feet.
Three feet, so it goes to the table.
And the design will be Chestnut Hill design.
A what design?
Chestnut Hill, which is the predominant design of the picket fences on Beatty Road, in the general area.
All right. Any other comments from the public? Back to the board, any further comments or questions here?
I just, I want to thank Ms. Ewing for the comments, and I, I agree, the accessibility issue, you had mentioned it when we were talking earlier, and I think, I appreciate that being emphasized, because certainly, this is a building for, for everyone, so I, I appreciate that. And, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Mr. Kylie?
I'm good, thank you. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Urban, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, Jen, can you make sure that, if we put something together, that we get to the historic district commission, so they know about our request for their consideration?
Yes.
Roy, do you have everything, you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Roy. All right, next up is to approve a charge for the Penfield Building Committee. This is something that we actually are taking a look at from the top, so we don't have a sample here. I know we've all been kind of thinking on, on both the project, what we'd like to see included. I don't expect us to necessarily wordsmith the whole thing here, but I think if we can have a discussion and get some of the points that we want included in it, then we'd have the ability to kind of wordsmith that, and potentially put it on next week's agenda, and close on it at that point, if that's okay with the board.
Is it reasonable?
Absolutely. I think it, it would be difficult to, to come up with the final product, and that's just the exact words, but to have the broad conversation makes sense.
If we do that, we can start the discussion here, we can get that out, you can have some additional time to take a look at that, and then we can try and get something finalized by next week. With that as a start, let me just throw something on the table, then kind of open it back up to everybody. Seems to me there are kind of two issues with this. One is, we don't so much have an edspec as we have a building, and we have some ongoing engineering analysis. We are also in the process right now of talking with the insurance company, and that is, as I think I've referenced before, a discussion much like many of the homeowners in the beach area are going through, where the insurance company is, has their approach and their numbers, and we have our engineers and our approach and our numbers, and we're kind of trying to reconcile the two. And at the moment, we have a ways to go. Based on that, how that comes out, there may be a couple of different options, or a few different options, in terms of how we approach. So the, the building committee would be initially reviewing those options, and kind of making a recommendation as to which way we go, and then kind of the more traditional role of the building company, committee, helping manage the project from that point on, to budget and schedule. As we, just to cover again, we thought this was a, more of a simple repair in January, when we looked at, at some of the foundation being scoured out, the building kind of collapsing a bit, and it has turned out to be a little bit more complex than that, in terms of the, looking at what needs to be done to the foundation, and how much of the foundation needs to be restored or repaired, as well as then, not just resettling the building, but making sure that it is, I guess the term would be plumb, in terms of all that, the corners and points are brought back in, because as the foundation sank or was scoured out, the building itself settled, but also, not settled, but collapsed a bit, but also then twisted a bit. So there are some questions as to how to bring all that back, and that is adding to some of the complexity of just the repair, it's not just a simple, you know, jack it back up, put some sand underneath, and we're back in business. All right, there's also another question as to whether the, as with all the beach area homes, does the damage exceed 50%, and that would change what would have to happen, and as you heard in the prior, prior presentation at this board, that if it did reach that level, we might be in a position where we had to raise it in order to meet FEMA's standards and guidelines. So that's the short form of where we are with the building at this point, and those discussions with the insurance company are ongoing.
Okay, just back to your last comment, raise in the form of lift, or raise in the form of destroy?
R-A-I-F-C.
Great, okay.
Lift.
Perhaps we should just use lift.
Yeah, we'd have to, or maybe the better term is, we'd have to make it compliant with FEMA guidelines.
Okay, that's fine.
And bring it up to today's, when it was originally built and designed, it met the FEMA guidelines in existence at that time. Two things have happened since then, even though it's only been a few years, the FEMA guidelines have changed, they have increased the, I'm going to say the base flood elevation, but basically the level you have to raise the building to. And then the second thing that happened is based on the new maps that are coming out, the flood zone itself changed. This area actually, I think, went from an A to a V zone. So there's a little bit difference from that standpoint.
Okay.
And again, I shouldn't be saying things that, that we heard in June, so that, it shouldn't be contradicting what we heard then from the engineers in any respect. Nothing's changed since that standpoint, in terms of the analysis.
Okay. So, if I may, just, just to back up a step to one of your earlier comments, it seems to be, and we talked about this at a previous meeting, that it seems that this building committee will be quite unique, because they're going to have what I'm going to call a dual purpose, right? They're not just going to build a building that's been presented to them via an edspec or another charge by town bodies, this committee is going to have to go out and do some investigative work to determine what the best options are, what the cost benefit analyses are of this versus that, and take into consideration all the things that we've talked about in the past, the insurance issue that Mr. Tetra just raised, the neighborhood concerns, the FEMA regulations, the flood mitigation plans, and how we fit into all those things, and, and a host of other things. In addition to the need to the community, what do we build, where does it go, how big is it, you know, is it public, is it private? I mean, there's a million things that could come up, so this committee is much more than, quote, "a building committee," and I just want to, that's my understanding of what we're contemplating here, so I just want to throw that out there for, you know, just general backup discussion, if that's, if that's at all aligned with how you guys are thinking.
I, I think that lines up with how Mr. Tetra started, and certainly how I am thinking too, and a number of those things that you laid out. Part of the struggle in thinking about and preparing for today's meeting, just even in the thought process, is that what I don't want to see happen, which is sometimes easier to say than what I do want to see happen, is that I don't want this committee to try and go through and do the work that's been done by the technical professionals, again. We want to take that work and build on it, we want them to gather all the existing information and make use of that. So I think what I'm not interested in is, I guess, what I might call, a lot of times, second guessing. That said, I'm, I'm hopeful that the group will take all the pieces together, and in a comprehensive way, be able to put that particular piece in context. So I think that what you just said, Mr. Kylie, I, I am on board with, but I think that the way that we phrase that is important, because we, we've asked, and we said this, when we talked about this earlier, that we are asking this group to take that on, as opposed to us doing that here at the table together, because it's, it's a big job, and there are a lot of pieces to that. I just want to balance that with, I, I don't want to go too far with that, I guess is what I'm saying. I want to empower them to do that work, yet at the same time communicate that we don't want to spend another two years on that analysis, and we want to move forward, given the knowledge we have, and in a way that, as, as I think you said at the last meeting, we'd like to keep this process moving, but that it be done in a way that's responsible to the community and to the, the environment as well.
I can play by your-
Sorry.
Add two points. One is that we have had quite a bit of interest in the building committee, we've had over 30 responses for folks that, that were interested in participating. That's, that's a tremendous compliment to the, I think, volunteer spirit and community spirit in Fairfield. As we just got done discussing, this is not the easiest project in some respects, it's a little bit different, and it's great to see that many people step up and want to be part of that, and want to help. Second, one of the other criterias we go through this is that we do have an insurance policy based on, and it's part of what the ongoing, I'll call them discussions with the insurance company are, we've got a $500,000 deductible, they are responsible for costs over that, to a point, we don't get carte blanche, and that's part of what we are discussing, and how that process works in terms of the rebuild, repair of this, in terms of what's taking place. So that will also be something that will be a consideration for the committee.
While we're on that topic, I mean, and without getting into weeds on it, it's, it's a pretty big component, though, this insurance piece, that certainly you and your administration know much more about than I do as a selectman for the town, and you're much closer to it. So I don't understand enough about that process to have any feeling for what the impact of that insurance settlement will be. And what little I do know, and please correct me when I'm wrong, is that there's a kind of a, you know, chicken and the egg thing going here, because if we keep talking about how we're going to repair, and that keeps changing, that can also change the review on it, and it can affect, and it can affect the, the finances. So do we have to come to a town-wide decision on how we specifically want to repair it in order to determine the insurance, or does the insurance more determine what they think should be done, and therefore, we have to kind of work around that a little bit? I just not, I'm not sure where the leverage lies in that conversation.
Closer to the latter than the former. We can't decide, we're going to rebuild this thing down at Jennings Beach, and they're not going to pay for that. There'd be some sort of settlement on this end. If we did that, it would cost a lot more money than that settlement, so there'd be a lot more involved. We will probably have to bring this before each of the town boards, including this one, the Board of Selectment again, because we'd put in the, the non-recurring budget, that the entire expenditure for this would be approximately a million dollars to a million and a half. That was in that $5 million package we approved, and there was some flexibility in terms, but not unlimited flexibility in terms of doing that. It looks like this is going to be, at minimum, probably about a $2 million expenditure, even if we, our deductible may still be the $500,000, but in order to spend that much money, we would have to go back to the boards to get that approved. So that would be one of the tasks facing the building committee.
Right.
Once we agree on what that, that number is. There's still a pretty wide range in what that estimate is.
Right.
But it looks like it's definitely going to be over what we had approved before. So in order to expend that money, we need authorization from the Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, and RTM to do that. So even, again, if the net is still to the town, $500,000, because the expenditure side is up, we need authorization to spend that money in the first place. The details beyond that get into, at one level, is it more than 50% of the appraised value of the structure or not, and that drives certain things you can do. If it's less than that, then it would be our option to raise it, but the insurance company may not cover the raising of that, or the expenses involved in that. And as we get into that raising, it appears, even though we don't have detailed estimates back, based on the initial discussions with the engineers on how they go about that, that's a very expensive process.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you remember the maps with all the individual foundation pieces and supports.
Right.
You raise it, they all have to come up. If you raise it in place, you have to do that underneath the existing structure, which becomes a more complicated engineering task.
Okay.
So again, I don't mean to sound like we have detailed numbers on, on the high end of that, we don't.
Right.
But we have enough engineering experience saying, that's an expensive project if you choose to do that, then we know that's going to cost more than renovating or rebuilding the structure where it is.
Okay. So if I look at this decision, which is a big decision to make on this insurance, the insurance, the type of reimbursement, the type of work that's going to be required as part of it, to qualify for whatever you guys agree to, and to that final number. And I know there's a lot of moving pieces there, and there's more unknowns than knowns at the moment, for me. Is it fair to say that at least directionally, that decision kind of has to be made, so that the building committee will know what road they're going down? You know, is it this bucket of types, is it in this bucket of types of things, repair, remove, or is it something else over here? Because we can't expect them to know that, to negotiate that, and make that decision for that fork in the road. So I guess my question is, do you have any visibility on when we might have clarity on that big decision there with the insurance company, to know that it's going to be this kind of repair, and it's going to be in this, you know, strike zone financially, versus a whole different set of circumstances? Because that, that drives a lot of it, won't it? Or am I just missing something, big picture?
No, I think that, I guess I'd phrase it a little bit differently, but I think, I think you're in the right place. I think the issue is, is it 50% or more, which is the first one. If it's more than 50%, to some degree FEMA tells us what we have to do, and because of that, the insurance company will cover more of that.
So going in back.
Okay. If it's less than 50%, the insurance company will cover up to that, in essence, making the building whole as to the way it was on October 28th. A little bit of flexibility in that, but not much. And then, anything we do beyond that would be something that, we would be involved in. There are certain hazard mitigation grants, as you've heard us talk about for homeowners in the beach area, that might also be available. The, so those might have to be evaluated, the challenge of those, as our homeowners are finding out, is that those are competitive, so there's no guarantee you get those. It takes a long time to hear back as to what's taking place, and it's typically a 75-25 program, so it would be at least 25% cost share that we'd have to put in. There are certain restrictions on eligible costs, so we'd have to realize that, that for the not eligible costs, we'd be on the hook for 100%. So I think, going back to your point, the first question is to determine the 50% factor or not, and then, I think that drives what the choices are, and certainly what the financing is, from that point on.
Directionally at least.
Yep. So there's, there's two levels of approval, if you will. One is for the total expenditure that's going on, which will be impacted by what choice is made. The second is if any additional funding was being requested beyond the $500,000.
Thank you for that, appreciate that.
But I think that one of the questions that Mr. Kylie asked was- But I think that one of the questions that Mr. Kylie asked was, do we have a sense of the timing of that? Part of my concern is, as we think about actually writing this charge, is if it's this way, you know, we're either going east or west in terms of the potential options for the committee.
Yeah. I will, again, reference the beach area and our homeowners, because we are really experiencing the same decision process they're going through. It will be a challenging discussion with the insurance company. So it's not, it's not like, the analogy, you know, I wish it was, is more like if your car's in an accident, you call up your insurance company, they tell you where to take it, they give you a price, you get it fixed, you come back, and, you know, a couple weeks later, you have your car back. It's not quite that simple in terms, or straightforward in terms of the discussion. So we are in the process of going through that. So specifically, no, I don't have a date. I can't tell you. Give us another two weeks, we'll have that done. It's really a function, I'd like to have it done in another month, but I just can't confirm to you that's how quick it can happen. There are just too many pieces involved at this point, and too many details that we have to resolve.
But that's important, because, you know, because if we don't at least know that, then I don't know, I mean, we could put together a committee charge and all the other, you know, components of a committee charge and move that forward, and I'm very happy to do that. But if we don't have at least, you know, a path in east or west for them to be taking, to be starting from, I just get concerned that we're going to lose a lot more time because this, it doesn't sound like this insurance company has been moving at the, you know, at a very fast pace, as far as getting this finalized. And I don't know what their incentive is to move at a quicker pace, or how we can quicken that process and get them into the room, and get them to the table, and come up with a plan, and come up with a number. That's, I mean, that's kind of where I'm going with this.
Just to be fair, they have a number they'd be happy to give us.
Well.
We're just not sure that we can
Live with that number.
Do the repairs for that price. So that's part of the discussion we're going through.
So thought, one thought would be, because I, we, from a procedural standpoint for us, if we wait to write the charge until we know, then we're going to be that much farther behind. And it seems, and I am hesitant to do that, but am respecting and feel the same way about the insurance piece, but there, I think there could be a way for us to actually write into the charge, if A, or if B. Because essentially, if I'm putting this correctly, you know, if we are over 50%, in a sense, our options are shrunk in terms of we're going to be directed and required to do certain things, potentially. If we're not, we actually, then, we have more options to choose from, and it's a broader discussion. So I don't want to hold up our process or the beginning of it, just because we also know, given that there are 30 people, and there, we have that interest and availability, and that it takes time to get the appointment process done and all that, I, if there's a way that we can write this to somehow address that concern, that would be helpful.
If I can reference the school building model that we use a lot. We typically have the charge in some cases before we have the full spec done. Now, we kind of pushed back on that in the last year or so, and said we want to see the spec first. But historically, we didn't have the spec when we did the charge. I like having the spec first. I don't mean to change that process.
But, yeah, this is unique.
And we can, we certainly can wait till next week to see what progress. I'm not sure we're going to make great progress in the next week, but we can certainly, you know, a week later is just more information, and that can give us time to think through how we do that.
Well, just to be perfectly clear, I mean, I heard what you just said, but I am not in favor of not doing this at all.
No.
I never even suggested that we don't do this charge. And in fact, you know, we should do it as quickly as humanly possible so that we can move the process forward. So whatever, whether it's generic language, or generic thoughts, or optional language that goes in there, I'm all for knocking this out and putting something in front of us next week in a more formal, you know, setting that we can approve, so that we can move forward.
Yeah, and I never heard you saying that. I think, I think you, I think we all share this concern. It's clear that any of us, anyone in town, building committee, any of us, any town body, we can't take certain steps until we have some of these answers. But I agree. I think I'll go back to something I started to touch on is, and I did say, but just want to clarify. I agree that we need to keep the process moving forward, and we need to be, you know, very cognizant of timing. And at the same time, I want us to make sure that we're taking the right steps as we go along, so. But I agree with you, Mr. Kylie. I would like to see us keeping it moving, and I never heard you saying otherwise.
I think that the opportunity here is, we definitely want to move forward, and move forward appropriately. I think that it's also, one of the things we've learned, is we want to make sure that we do it right. And make, we've learned a lot in terms of how the building has withstood this storm. We want to make sure we understand the impact of this storm, and anything we can or need to do to make it better able to withstand a storm like this. We also have had a chance to see what the impact is on flooding the neighborhood. And to the extent that this structure or facility contributed to any of the issues in the neighborhood, we want to make sure that we address those.
Sure.
So we have a chance to, so we don't need to address necessarily that the whole hazard mitigation program for the beach area in its entirety. But we certainly need to address it for kind of this neighborhood, in this section of the beach, to make sure that what we're doing there has a positive impact on the flood mitigation plan, and will fit well with the overall mitigation plan that we're doing.
Absolutely.
So if we look at that, so a lot of our discussion up till now is centered on the first part, which certainly, I think, we all have appropriate questions on it. I think that's good. The second part is really about the building and structure, and perhaps that would fit closer to some of the past building charges we've had, and we can draft something up similar to that for consideration here.
Before we go on to that, I actually, I, yeah, I do
I didn't mean to move us on to that. I just was talking about how framework
Right. No, and I think that's, as we've talked, it's, I think there's kind of the introductory, we recognize that there are variables that need to be sorted out. This Part B that I've heard everyone saying is that we are asking this group to review options, and then Part C, as you're saying, as you said in the beginning, to start us out, was the management of the project. And I guess I'm interested, we've had some kind of overarching discussion about the review of the options, but are there kind of specific things that we want to make sure that this group does as it reviews the option? And I say that in part because one of my specifics is that they utilize the already existing as they review the options that they utilize. And that may seem redundant, but, and it may seem obvious, but I want to make sure that we're clear, that we expect them to make use of the technical reports that have been provided to date. And I wonder if there are other specific things that we're thinking about, that we want to make sure. We've had a number of public forums. We want to make sure, obviously, the meetings will be public, and there will be public input. Is there anything else that we're specifically hoping that they will do in terms of taking steps as they review?
Well, I think emphasized, and one of the reasons for having the building committee is to make sure that this whole process does take place in public, and the public has a chance to kind of hear everything that's going on as part of the process. I think that is a very important piece of our moving forward. Mr. Kylie?
No, I mean, if we want to, do we want to start drafting some language, or do we just want to have Jen take our notes and comments, and have the town attorney begin to compile our thoughts in advance on next week? I'm just not sure of what we want to do process-wise. Because I think, as Mr. Tetra mentioned, I think the second half of the charge is, you know, probably a bit simpler as far as us writing it. It's the first half that might have, you know, some, you know, some challenges in it as far as what components, I mean, there's no way we can make a list of everything for anyone to look at, and I would never attempt to do that. But, you know, with the neighborhood concerns, and I'm sure I'm going to miss a few, the FEMA regulations, the flood mitigation plan, and, you know, in general, being a good neighbor to everyone that's down there, right? I mean, there's a number of things that need to be considered as part of the final decision-making phase, which I assume will come sometime after the general decision phase is done, which is that fork in the road that we talked about before. So I don't know how specific we need to get, or, you know, if we need to provide a large realist of things for them to do and to look at. It seems to me that we don't have to do that.
Yeah. We've gone from, if you think of, one, our charges are generally not too specific in that regard.
Right.
But if you also even look at the ed specs, one of the lessons we've learned from school buildings is to provide a more generic spec, so the building committee is not locked in to do a certain thing. Now, there's no state statute that requires them to follow an ed spec in this case, our, but they do have an overall budget, and I think we want to give them enough guidance in that case. And actually, let me rephrase that, I have to build up to an overall budget.
That's right. I mean, we just witnessed that this evening with Osborne Hill, right? We didn't know six months ago that the roof needed to be replaced, right, in the gym. But we gave them enough flexibility and enough bandwidth within their charge and within their budget to be able to, you know, accommodate certain things, and I think that's what you're referring to.
Right. And I, I hear that, but on the other hand, with Ludlow, we did the opposite. We said, this is the ed spec, this is what you want me to build, this is how much it is. So I agree, there needs to be room in the charge for the group to make their way. But I think, I'm not looking here to come up with sentences, and I don't know that it's the town attorney who would draft this, whoever ends up putting this together, but more that we, we've had a lot of brainstorming here, and over the course of a couple meetings. And I think, you know, even in just writing down some of the things that I'm hearing, things like allowing, to be clear, that we are, you know, emphasizing the need for public comment and addressing neighborhood concerns, the FEMA regs, using the technical reports, considering the broader context of flood mitigation. I think it's worthwhile having all of those, not exactly how we want to do it, but mentioning that those, these are some of the pieces of our conversation that we feel should be in there.
I think that makes sense. Maybe therein there is, like, you know, general topics of discussion, or general versus directives.
Exactly. Right. The, I think the language can be as such. But as we had, and I think, I think the Riverfields Building Committee charge was one of the first ones where the, at the end, we had the pieces of the committee will consider the following, and the cost of maintenance, for example, as a consideration that we specifically named. This is a concern, appropriate green initiatives, time-tested design. So it's those kinds of things. This is, again, a little bit of a different project, but perhaps some of the same elements and others as well. So I think, I don't want to lock people into, this is how you have to do it, just like this. But I think we are naming our priorities.
Perhaps, as Mr. Kylie suggested, we could ask Jen to draft up some notes kind of ahead of the minutes, get the notes back to us, so we can add some additional items in, collect those, and have those back before us next week.
I think that would be helpful.
If there's enough clarity there that we can draft something, we do that. If not, we kind of consider that again. But hopefully, there's enough clarity there that we can kind of draft something up for us, too.
Yeah. It sounds like we've touched on the main, big topics, at least the ones I can think of at the moment. You know, the areas of concern, the areas that need to be at least considered during that first decision-making phase, which will lead to the more, the more traditional building committee phase. So I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Jen, do you have enough notes to do that?
I believe so.
If not, we can kind of repeat everything we've said, if that would be helpful.
Channel 79.
If that's okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Yes.
Mr. Spino, since you so seldom get out in front of the camera. And so we can prove that you actually do exist to those viewers at home. And because you were reappointed to the cable advisory committee and did not get your proper recognition in front of this board, yes, you may get up.
I just want to say, if your intention is transparent, you know, to get it out to the public, that when this committee, this group meets, they should meet in a place either, well, this room actually is probably too small, because they don't know how large the building committee will be. I'm suggesting that they be charged to meet at the Board of Ed conference room, so we can present these meetings live. Because we can do live, or we can do live.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Great idea.
Kristen?
Actually, Mr. Spino raises a good point in terms of the number of members.
I was just reading the same thing. We have a range in the other one, seven to 11, I believe.
Right. We, I just, I guess I want to make a comment about that. I think, I think the difficulty with 30 amazing and talented and diverse people, obviously 30 people cannot serve on a building committee, and we aren't going to want to.
That is correct.
And we may be tempted, because there are so many excellent candidates, to have the group be a very large group. But I think we need to be cautious with that. And I, I think my, my own thought would be, I wouldn't really want to go much more than 12. That would be probably my outer limit, just for purposes of discussion and doing business. That's, and I'm certainly open to conversation, I'm putting that on the table, too.
Yeah. My take is that even that's too big. I think that the seven to 11 guideline that we've had in the past is one that we've learned from experience, that that's a reasonable number, with projects much bigger than this. Because when we're all said and done, this is not a new school, this is not Fairfield Woods Middle School. And I, personal preference is that seven to nine, that allows for enough participation and enough expertise from the folks. But, you know, we have seven to 11 as our historic standard, that I just think is a reasonable one, how to do this. And then we'll have the choice of who we nominate and how many we actually nominate within that.
Yeah. I think seven to nine sounds good.
I'm good with that, too.
All right. And then, and as with respect to, any further discussion, I guess, on this? Good?
Good, thank you.
All right. The next up is the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Do we need to plug the amendment?
I move to amend this item and just add at the end of the sentence, comma, $13,845.72.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The item as amended as before. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next up, Town Attorney, Private Executive Session Concerning Pending Litigation. I'm afraid at this point, may I have a, to, well, let me stop that. We will go into private executive session based on the motion. Going to have to ask everybody to leave the room at this point. Just so everybody's clear, as much as we can discuss things in private executive session, we are not allowed to make any votes or make any motions in private executive session.
May I ask you one question?
May I have a motion to come back into public session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're back in public session while in private executive session. No motions were made, and no votes were taken. May I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the town attorney?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.